Um, we haven't really as a group defined advocacy yet into what that's going to mean. And but given kind of the limited resources of of time eh in meeting things, we thought we'd start by bringing forth a task. We have certainly a member of our subcommittee or a member to the committee that's really passionate about um community engagement and getting word out and communication. And so we thought we'd bring to the committee for discussion um the idea of a newsletter and see um with starting with a task. What the committee, if the committee has input about the idea of a newsletter, um we're coming to you for direction, knowing that we work at the direction of full board.
Right, Adam, if if not the newsletter, then what is the charge for the subcommittee around advocacy portion of policy?
So I see um two pieces to this. I think first we need to define um what we mean by advocacy because in my mind. I was thinking of advocacy at sort of the state level. I hear that you mean more communication and outreach to the local community. So I just want to be sure that we define what we're talking about.
Um, I want, I would like, oh, right, not worry.
Um, so I know that you had, Lindsay, you had emailed Chris about the newsletter and him and I had touched base briefly. And we had discussed the concept of having you bring a motion to the committee to consider. So um whether that, I'm assuming that you probably don't want to do it right now, so I'm not trying to put you on spot.
This is news to me, so I'm not.
But be, so because, because we as a committee operate by ma- by way of motion, right? So someone would have to make the motion that we're going to pursue this or that we're going to pass the policy subcommittee with pursuing it. So if you wanted to um touch base with Pam, Chris, myself, or.
Well, and also the subcommittee, I think.
Um, to decide what that would look like. Or better prepared to make a motion, um then we can, you'll also, because it will be something that we know is coming and on the agenda, you can distribute whatever you want. In advance so that we have whatever material you want to stream in advance. And then you can make that motion at our next meeting if you are, if that works for your timing or that'll break the date.
And then that that would allow the subcommittee or the general committee to, that would be the general committee's direction.
Right, so that's how the gen- that's how the committee would give the direction or not give the direction to the subcommittee. Does that make sense?
It does, it's just uh.
It seems like a very roundabout way of doing it, you know?
Well, and also I'm thinking about the the collaboration, like the finance subcommittee and collaboration that we used, that we talked about in workshop, like. That's not how that, that's not how that direction.
Also.
That, I guess that was more of a workshop setting than a an official meeting, though we were more kind of battering up ideas rather than making a motion. So that's the difference.
Not, I'm not sure that I see where you're getting at. Are you, do you mean there, like, have there more dialogue, air participation in the collaboration meetings?
Yeah, I mean, we, we kind of gave finance subcommittee some direction. And that wasn't a motion by a finance subcommittee member. That was a committee discussion in a workshop setting. So I guess I'm just not clear on.
But that also wasn't a new thing. Like, we did originally have.
Yep.
A vote for our finance subcommittee to participate in those meetings. And we had a lot of discussions about whether we would, we would ask them to participate them in the meetings if they were closed or if they were open. So I think that there was more background there. This is a new thing and we have to start somewhere.
Okay, that makes sense again, all of them.
I think one other thing that, if I may, is is that that conversation too was coming in the context of creating charges for those subcommittees. So that was in the, like, as a group, we were saying, what is the finance subcommittee going to do in that direction then? We did the same thing with policy and advocacy by naming that.
Right.
And then talking about it. So now in order to make those things happen.
Yep.
That haven't been established before, we do it by way of motion.
I found the specific actions underneath the direction needs, there needs to be a motion brought to the larger committee.
Got it. Because it's going to take resources of time and energy of this group of our administrators and that sort of thing. So the full body gets to determine whether that's something that we choose to expend resources toward, not necessarily financial resources.
Yeah, I mean, I, I'm fine with that. And I, I think the concept of calling it a newsletter, I, I never use the words newsletter specifically. I think I'm more likely to have an organic conversation about what does communication like look like from this body with the state? And funding from the state, what does it look like with the community? And choose a course of action from that way, right? So if it's, if it's newsletter and that doesn't stick and then I need to come back with something else and like, I mean, I guess I just have to go through the process, but um. Yes, I, I just kind of thought that that work lived in the policy and advocacy subcommittee. So maybe you might ask of the larger committee, isn't newsletter but something broader?
Thank you. It's whatever you leave the motion to be.
I brought that based on the conversation we've had today. And to be back, so.
Yeah, do we want to discuss that a bit in the subcommittee and have some back and forth to help define what kind of motion?
That would be helpful to me, like, I know.
I'm going to leave that at the subcommittee for now, just because in the interest of time, we have a lot of presentations coming. Yes, Jake.
Can I ask about MASC? Because we have not, at least in my time here, we've not sent anybody to that. I think it's a little bit timely if we are going to send somebody. May, it may be worthwhile saying, yes, we should. I don't remember exactly when the registration date is, but it's coming up, if I recall.
That's what I've always been hoping.
Right around that end today, I think it is.
You can entertain right for the.
Right through.
You're off.
Okay, maybe they're very early on.
What are these meetings? Sorry, the MASC holds meetings at school?
Yeah, no, like, yeah, it's a, it's kind of the conference for all school committees. But, all right, if there's not a timeline on it, that's fine, but, but I think it's worth adding to that conversation of sending our people to us.
So does that now officially get added to the subcommittee, the policy and advocacy subcommittee agenda?
We always had the option of going to that.
Yeah, no, I, I mean, these two, I'm hearing this, I'm hearing MASC attendance that I'm hearing.
So we let our other communicate. We've always had the option of going to it. I know that I have asked Pam personally, like, AR be allowed to go with us? What's the deal with? Who, in, well, you know, if I, if I chose to register as a district, how are the registrations?
That's good enough.
Yeah, and she had said yes, but that was a, you know, we were gee, now.
Well, now we all.
Uh, all right, anything else from the policy and advocacy committees?
All right, so why does that get added to the subcommittee agenda?
I think what they're saying is that we don't need to. It sounds like if we want to go.
The map? No, it's newsletter or other conversation.
So how about this? Can I just submit that that the subcommittee takes this up at our next meeting? At this meeting today, we had a very specific thing we needed to move forward on. If time can allow for that to be the top priority of the next meeting, okay, then we could make that up. But if something else comes up that's timely, we have to take that and, and it sounds great through my regards.
Happy to send along the information. We have it at the end of our COVID register. It's jo- it's a joint conference between the Mass Superintendent's Association and the School Committee Association. So if we are interested in setting the delegation, we need to organize an actual register in, in books and space. It's um November 12th. Great. Superintendent's report. Um, I did a piece of it already, um and also in the interest of time, I think I can just uh. Hit a couple of highlights because I would say my report is scattered throughout other aspects. Nice. Um, just a reminder that we have two more open houses coming up this Thursday at Essex Elementary Open House and next Thursday. Uh, Memorial School Open House. The attendance has been quite good um up to this point, so we just encourage you to look them up and meet your teachers and enjoy uh the school building. Not especially, but if you have an opportunity to come to Essex, we can also show you the facilities, the fact of it being by the same facility. Um, I'm not sure if uh it was mentioned that the community meeting one, it's going to start. We're going to open the doors at four thirty and have building tours available. So those, like, Teresa said, those flyers will be out soon. Um, and I think for now, I can stop there. I'm going to stop, talk a little bit about uh our preliminary enrollment report. Um, for the end of the program when we do some business uh items. And our whole agenda tonight has really been the focus of our work over the past few weeks, which is the formulation of the competency determination and the draft. So we'll be talking. So unless there are specific questions or there was something you were hoping to hear about, I'm getting nothing on tonight, I have to afford it now.
Nope.
So, all right, then we invite um Principal Provo, Principal Willis, join us. For our elementary school improvement plans.
Thank you.
These were really fun to look through.
Oh, good.
I sat through a lot of them that were, right, not like in progress, in progress. This was a sadist sign.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
I had to go.
I know, we kept trying to, can we just say that? Um, so, hey, were we doing um this in the ASSE?
Yes, or interwoven, however you put it.
Jiggle.
Okay.
Yeah. Uh, okay, so we're in the mid-cycle of our uh two-year school improvement plans. Um, one of the things as we were kind of putting them together, I think we were both wondering, why do we have two different packets? Because they're, they're very similar, if not exactly the same at this point, which is um a lot of progress over the years. Um, having the two schools going in the same direction, uh which has been great. Um, so the first school area that we had, uh strategic initiative, one, you all have heard a lot about this, but the NEAS process. So we had our visits last year. Um, we received a report from NEAS. We shared the report with our staff. We shared the NEAS report also with our school councils. Um, tonight, I want to talk to all of you about um the commendations, the recommendations that NEAS provided us. Um, those recommendations are things that we'll have to write goals um about over the next, um, you know, the next few years. We've uh woven those into an updated school improvement plan. So even though it's not a time in the process where we've run a new school improvement plan. We've uh woven the NEAS uh recommendations and you'll notice that they're, they're noted as um NEAS goals uh at the bottom of the, the actual school improvement plan laws. Um, and then the other thing kind of going forward that we're, we're looking forward to is um October eighteen through twenty-one, twenty twenty-six. So not this October, next October, um there'll be an initial accreditation of this uh made up and uh to meet with us.
Um, the next goal was creating a shared MRSD elementary teacher assistant team model. If you're not familiar with that, teacher assistants team is where teachers can bring concerns about a student to a collaborative group for some problem solving. Um, and just a way to work with skilled colleagues to create um strategies and interventions for students that may be at risk. Just to make sure that students are getting the right level of support and sort of bridges general education and intervention services. So we, prior, it used to be sort of this big, like, get together as a big table of a lot of different people in this big problem solving situation. And it was a little timely and it took a lot to schedule that throughout the workday, make sure people are available. So we switched it up to more of a consultation model where it provides teachers with more immediate um support with the correct colleague. So if it is like an occupational therapy concern, then we're immediately putting that teacher in touch with the OT rather than putting a bunch of people around the table. So that was created um and rolled out, you rolled it out two years ago, I think. We rolled it out at Essex last year. Um, so we did meet this goal. We're revising it as needed as we work through it, um but it seems to be working pretty well.
Um, and the, the next area, I think, is one that um Kim and I and also Heather are really excited about. We've put a lot of, um, a lot of uh time and uh conversations and evaluation um around the concept of instructional coaches, which is something that we advocated for, for a number of years and then um was supported um by the committee. So, so thank you all for that. Uh, last year, uh there really isn't a one-size-fits-all model that works for every school, every situation um in terms of instructional coaching. So we um kind of had phase one last year and we're excited to move into phase two this year. Um, so we've added the coaches. Um, last year, we spent a lot of time training the coaches um in terms of different models. Um, and then also just getting acclimated to the way we do things. Um, we didn't want coaches to come into classrooms um and tell people you should be doing things, you know, a certain way without knowing how we actually do it to start. Um, so that was a big piece of last year. Um, also a lot of data analysis. Um, so looking at current data, historical data, um which is leading into this year, which is um kind of work on phase two, um and we're implementing a coach residency model. So one of the things that happened last year was uh was just natural, the coaches were pulled and kind of pushed in different directions. Um, so we're trying to have a little more equitable access um for all teachers across um both schools. Um, so the way it will work is the, the coaches will have residency weeks in each building. Uh, so for example, this is not here, but next week might be, you know, our literacy coaches working really intensely with our kindergarten team and at Memorial. And the math coaches really working intensely with fourth grade in Essex. Um, and then they kind of rotate through a ten-week cycle. Um, so they'll meet with the teams, um the grade level teams in each school. Um, they'll look at the data in terms of how kids performed last year, how kids are performing currently, and then data trends as well. Things that we've always um done as the instructional leaders in the building, but having two people that can really dive deep into the data has been great. Um, so they'll have uh meetings with the teams, they'll set goals, um will provide embedded coaching over the course of that week. And then they'll, they'll kind of move on to another grade level and those, those teachers will work on the, um those new strategies. Um, they'll track the data and they'll come back ten weeks later to take a look at where they were, where they are now, um and how, how those gaps are being filled in. So um we're really excited about um this next phase and I think it's going to be really, really impactful um on students.
Next one is the creation of authentic learning activities. So we have created, our teachers created a list of authentic learning activities that are happening at every grade level throughout the year. Um, I would consider this sort of a living, breathing document. Um, the goal is always to incorporate more authentic learning activities. Every year, things go on. This is something coaches are helping with as well. I think um some of the work to do is to continue to revise this list and also really look at it across schools and see what are the authentic learning activities that every student in grade K needs to experience versus, you know, what might be something that Memorial does versus Essex. So that is still the work in progress and work to be done there.
Um, and one of the things that the, the coaches worked, um with Kim and I and also actually really closely with Heather, um was the family math and literacy night. So we held one in each school. Um, I think one of the things that we took away from that was we need to find a way to entice more participants. Um, so we've got some ideas there, uh maybe a different format. Um, last year, we did um just parents, um so we might switch that up. Um, this year to have um more people involved.
And next school area was um the library teaching assistant, which was news us last year. Um, so this goal has been met. This will be the second year this library TA is in process. So she really helps keep the library open on the days that Miss Silag is at the alternate school. So she does a lot of the circulation, the shelving. She runs book clubs, those sorts of pieces of maintaining a library that's very difficult um for Miss Silag to be able to teach in classes all day. So she just really keeps it up and going. Um, a lot of like the book processing, displays, um like sort of promotion of different reading activities of the year.
Next one, same scene, there's no more book burning back and forth.
The next school area was aligning the performing arts curriculum and performances. There was a vast difference between sort of the concerts and things that were going on between the three schools. So this was a piece for alignment. So we had created a common elementary music expectations and plan that was developed in December of twenty-four. And then the goal has been working towards that integration and alignment throughout the school improvement plan. So part of it was sort of those night concerts, which um we worked with um Richard and Fiona just to make sure that there were like combined Manchester Essex bands, combined Manchester Essex chorus, so it wasn't all separate. Also helped keep the concert to a more reasonable length that way. Um, so that was how we managed the night concerts in terms of day performances. This was definitely um more of a change for Essex, I would say. Their winter concerts have always just been sort of a replay of the nighttime concerts. So I really uh changing that to make it whole school. So making sure that every grade level had an opportunity to present something and showcase something that they're learning in the general music classes. So instead of it just being a performance for those that are participating in band force and rock bands, um it became more of a whole school situation. So we did roll that out this year um as a trial. The next step in that is revamping it to make sure that the community can come. Um, because it was sort of a first year thing in the uh limited-ish space of Essex Elementary. It made it really difficult to invite the community in for the performance, to make sure all students and any families that wanted to come have the space to show up. But I'm working with um our team leaders tomorrow, actually, to find a way to look at our winter concert and how can we make it accessible for both families and students to enjoy.
Uh, and you know, one of the things that we've talked about over the years is the importance of, of students at both elementary schools having a similar, similar experience, eight through five. So when they cross the bridge, um across the big bridge, um they, they're arriving at the middle school with a, with having a similar experience. Uh, but each school has its own unique um population and culture and needs and that sort of thing. So the next two goals, um what, uh each one is specific to um the two elementary schools. So um the first one is specific to Memorial. Um, so this whole area was around um um having staff learn from other Java-like peers. Um, so that, that started off with um establishing transparent classrooms at Memorial. So it was a concept that I presented to the staff at a staff meeting. Um, it was voluntary teachers who opted in, have a little icon outside of their, uh their classrooms. It's a little tie with bees. Um, and that says to anybody that's walking through that this is a transparent classroom. Um, you can pop in anytime, pull up a chair, sit down, watch for five minutes, ten minutes, forty-five minutes. I mean, you know, maybe you have fifteen minutes left after you do your photocopying and you want to pop in and watch a third grade teacher teach a lesson and you're a third grade teacher, as an example. So we started off with that. I think we had like um ninety percent um of the rooms um opted into that. Um, and some, some, um, some situations, some programs didn't really lend itself to having people come in and observe. Um, uh, so that was kind of the first step. And then the second step after that was to get people out of their rooms to be able to go and do this at uh, you know, in longer periods of time. So um we set up a schedule of um, um, so peer coverage. So um we have a few people who had a little bit of time in their schedule where they could cover classrooms. Teachers can sign up to have someone cover their classrooms so they can go down the hall, upstairs, across the bridge, across the big bridge. Um, or down one forty-eight or down one forty-three. Um, we had teachers go um as far as Lingfield. Um, we had um Westonbury, um Switch, um Essex Elementary, Lino School, High School. Um, so we had a lot of teachers out observing, um teachers teaching. Um, maybe it's the same, um, same grade and subject. Maybe it's a different grade. Um, you know, I, I believe that, you know, good teaching is good teaching, so you can see it at different levels and pick up on different things. So um everybody that came back, they were just kind of bursting at the seams with ideas or even a lot of affirmations. Um, you know, some of the visits that they went, they expected to see like, wow, and they're like, oh, actually, like, I guess we should come see what we do because uh we're doing this aspect pretty well. Um, so that's kind of sparked some other ideas. Um, Heather's organized uh this year, um Java-like career, um observations and meetings uh for the specialists. Um, so art and music, library, physics, et cetera. Um, and then we're going to continue the uh the staff observation, observations. One of the first questions when teachers came back was, are we still doing that? Um, so we've set up the coverage schedule and um, you know, when we can, we'll get subs for people for half a day so they can go and, and visit another school. Um, it's been a nice kind of networking piece as well. So usually when, when a teacher goes and observes somewhere, I send them with a letter, um that thanks them and then offers to reciprocate. So if um anyone wanted to come here, um we actually had a visit from um Rockport Elementary School um earlier this week, last week, I think, or it was last week. Um, they just wanted to see like our technology and the, the um, just kind of the modern side of our building. It's been great.
Um, the goal specific for Essex was expanding the community partnerships for after-school clubs. This was something that was started the year prior under Sheila McAdam, creating for school clubs that were available to students that were assigned to their community partners, parents, or staff. Um, so that has continued. Um, we worked with the Council on Aging. Last year, they came in and ran some clubs after school. Um, another fun community partnership, but it wasn't necessarily for an after-school club, but just something new for us was the Shipyard Museum. Um, there was a big fifth grade team building, there's me and Essex and Manchester there at the end of the year. That was a huge hit. Um, and we, our band performed there for the Shipyard opening day, so that was exciting. Um, so just keeping those community partnerships ongoing and open and just looking for new ways to have students feel engaged in the school and also within the community.
We keep going.
So we're on the strategic initiative two, which is around incorporating social emotional learning throughout the school day. The first school was implementing um a developed spoken sequence. Uh, not that I share code it, this has been quite the undertaking. So um as you know, for tier one, we use um the Ruler program, which is through Yale. Um, I think what has made this so tricky is that Ruler really comes as like a framework of like four social emotional tools. But then it also has its own like side curriculum of lessons that if we had, if teachers had forty-five minutes in a day to do their own ruler lesson, we can incorporate all of that. We know the time is not there and it is constantly being revised and Ruler is constantly adding to it. So it's just become a little bit tricky to kind of keep up and revise as needed um with what students need. So there has been, there's a group of, a small group of um social emotional learning um coordinators in the district that I head up. There's a representative from Memorial and representative from Essex, and then there's also a middle school representative. Um, so we've sort of developed a broad spoken sequence that really focuses on, at the K-two level, focus on building foundational skills of rulers, so recognizing emotions, understanding it, labeling emotions, how to regulate. And then three through five is more around just the skill building and application of those tools, but it is a work in progress. Um, so it is developed, but now it's more about integrating it with the teachers, making sure that they are incorporating, that they have the supports that they need. Um, so it's sort of a ongoing process thing.
And the, the next school area, uh that was a joint goal, uh was around uh providing resources to families um through our newsletter connected to outside resources. So we collaborated um with a local child psychologist and he developed some resources for us to share with families in our newsletter. Um, so that was an um a goal that we met last year. Um, and then um specific to Memorial, the M, um, the MTSS, um, the PBIS portion of MTSS um was rolled out last year. Um, so positive behavior intervention supports. Um, we established school-wide expectations for students in terms of positive behavior. Um, and we developed a super recognition system. I have to give Rebecca Zaro, who's our school adjustment counselor, a lot of credit for this. We had um a year-long of kind of back and forth conversations of, you know, kind of, I, I didn't want to design it myself. I wanted to kind of give her ideas and have her be the person that worked with um a team on staff to come up with um ways to recognize students um for positive behaviors. We hadn't, we had a system in the past um that had just kind of taken its course and we needed to update it. Um, so she came up with this whole ticket system um where the teachers set up these little shops, so to speak, um throughout the course of the year. Where teach, where students can cha- uh trade in their tickets for different things. So it might be, you know, they could trade twenty tickets in to play a board game with a staff member of their choice or um things like that. Um, all the way up to the highest or most expensive thing is Memorial School swag. Um, and we actually are PTO, um she wrote a grant to the PTO um to buy a t-shirt for us. And so she's able to make t-shirts in-house for like six dollars apiece. Um, so she made a t-shirt for all the staff members for our kickoff meeting at the beginning of the year. Um, just to kind of entice the kids, because it's the thing, it's the t-shirts that they can, that they can earn if they save their tickets. Some spend their tickets, some save their tickets. It's a little, you know, little budgeting exercise as well. Um, it's been really successful.
One of the goals um for Essex was family engagement via newsletters and community for SEL. Um, so we created SEL opportunities at the open house that the specialists run. Um, Ben Tor open house, there's a little um scavenger hunt, that's who is complete, and there's an SEL side quest for students to complete. Um, take their parents on to go touch base with all of the different um specialists throughout the building to, to finish an activity regarding SEL. Last year, it was about how, how you won't feel when you're out of school. So students created a large bulletin board. I actually think it is being replicated at Memorial this year because it was such a big hit um with the specialists last year at Essex. Um, and then just teachers and myself alike, just adding SEL-related things to the principal newsletters just to keep families involved. One piece for this upcoming year would be really engaging. One piece for this upcoming year would be really engaging the families with rulers, having a family charter. Neither families can come in, students can walk them through like, how do we want to feel at home? Or walk them through like the charter that they completed in the classroom. Just be able to share that with families so that they are aware of the work that we're doing. And the second goal for EES was creating a comm space. So teachers had had created comm corners in their classrooms. And this was a way to create another alternative space in the building and for students that might need to take a minute or a break outside of the classroom somewhere safe for them to go. So we created, we took an office, created it into a very nice sensory room. If you stop by, please go in there. And a huge thanks to the Friends of Essex, our occupational therapist and school adjustment counselor, wrote a mini-grant to them to curate a bunch of materials for that space and they granted that. So not only did they, were they able to sort of furnish that comm space, and there are also additional materials that there were to give to teachers in every classroom to help them with their calming corners too. So it's become really nice. So while the goal was met, we do continue to just keep an eye on that space to see what the usage is like. We use it in a variety of ways. I have a student right now who is having a little bit of separation anxiety, kindergarten student. So now her job is to come in in the morning and go to the comm space and turn on this like water tank bubbling, fish tank looking thing. And that's been helpful for her. So it's been really nice to see that space in use. Onto strategic initiative three. This one is around just cultural competency. So the first one was implementing the investigating history program. This grade five, it says we've done the first year of implementation, but it's actually, we are in our third. So they completed two years of implementation already. We are entering our third with the fifth grade. So they are very much in it. And understanding of it, the feedback from fifth grade has been overly positive about this new curriculum. Our third and fourth grade teachers are like jumping up a bit to to get at it, but it just hasn't been released through the Department of Education yet. So this has been a little bit stalled. We had, I say we, not we, Heather, applied for the grant for grades three through four to be able to get the training and start implementing this curriculum. But unfortunately, we're not chosen for the grant this year. So we're looking forward to generalizing this to third and fourth grade, hopefully next year as well.
And then another goal shared at both schools was to bring in diverse authors for author visits. So we had Ina Khan visited both Memorial and Essex last year and looking forward right now. We're we're trying to identify a diverse author to those schools again. So Memorial-specific goals, one of the things that we talked about last year when we presented this was our goal of increasing family outreach for specialized programs. So our school adjustment counselor completed family outreach for students transitioning to Memorial. So this oftentimes are students that are transitioning either from Essex Elementary School or from neighboring communities into our specialized programs. So just having a smoother transition for those students. You know, it's tough if you're in third or fourth grade and, you know, you live in another town and go to a community school and then you are trying to kind of assimilate yourself into a new school and that sort of thing. So she's taken that on to help smooth those transitions. And then similar to Essex, the calm spaces and physical movement spaces. So we we identified a number of places in the building where we could increase physical movement for students. So in our hub, we have a number of games that students can play. So it can be for awards, it can be for a movement brain, also indoor recess. We've leveraged it for indoor recess. So instead of being in the classroom, you know, watching a video or playing a board game, they can go into the hub and play a kind of more of a gross motor activity. But then we've also, we also have some kind of similar calming spaces. So under the stairwell when we walk in, in the hub, we've got a little reading deck there with comfortable chairs and that sort of thing. And those are things that kids can use when they need it or oftentimes they're things that that kids can earn either through the ticket system or through the classroom system as well.
The last goal related to SSL, my people's reviewing and evaluating school-wide experiences. When I was meeting with the staff before my first year in that spring and summer before I started, one of like the key things that had kept coming up was about the different traditions that are happening in the building and whether we should keep doing them. Like, are we doing them because it's what's best for students? Are we doing them because it's just a passion project for particular staff? Are we like sort of, who 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 is it reaching? Who is it not reaching? What voices are or are not at the table? So part of the work that the school council has been taking on is really auditing all of the current traditions, taking a look at them and just sort of seeing like, is this still hitting the mark of where we want to be or where students are? Is it equitable to all? So that is work that the school council is doing and will continue to do. I have a brand, your school council coming on this year. So we'll have to backtrack a little bit and and get them up to speed. I'm sort of excited to take a look at that and make sure, like similar to the winter concert where like to look, make sure that like all students are being represented in these in these traditions that are so important to the Essex community. Well, plus of that. Yes, like plus of that's not going anywhere. Yeah.
And so then when we kind of sat down at the end and tried to modify this a bit, we're about halfway through the two-year process. I guess we have met about fifty-two percent or so of the goals. So we're about where we should be then, I guess. That was the goal. And then we just want to transition over to say a few other things about the NEAS report. So that number of commendations and some recommendations was also, Kim's going to talk about recommendations.
Yes, I have to talk about all the positive things. So, yeah. So NEAS kind of had really a lot of positive things to say from their 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 visit here. So we tried to take all of the commendations that were in the report and sort of categorize them. So they enjoyed the focus on the social emotional learning that was taking place in both buildings. So there's the supportive environments, the counseling services that we have available, just the safety protocols that are in place in both of the buildings, just making sure that students' physical and emotional health is kind of put first. They're impressed with the teaching, learning, and assessment. So they saw evidence of instruction being differentiated and student-centered with varied assessment practices and feedback and growth. They commended our professional learning and collaboration. So just the district providing the time within the district calendar for that ongoing professional development and collaboration time. And just other opportunities like the the book clubs that teachers can can participate in or professional development and just opportunities to collaborate with other colleagues in that area. They mentioned that the school leaders working collaboratively to set improvement goals. A lot of that came from all of the work in terms of aligning both of the elementary schools in their improvement goals. The incorporation of multi-tiered systems of support and interventions that are available to students and the specialized education services. And then also community and family partnerships and relationships with families. And then just in terms of resources and facilities, the technology and curriculum resources and the proactive planning, we talked a lot about building projects, proactive planning for facilities and capital improvements.
I mean, actually, that was one that they threw out the process. They kept shifting between the two categories of recommendations and commendations. And and they they decided that since the process is in place and don't really have control over that locally at the schools, that they would they would recognize and commend us for the facilities and the resources that we have, knowing that we're in the pipeline. So we appreciate that. And then in the area of recommendations, the good news is the areas of recommendation are all things that were in process, but just not been leveraged yet. So the first piece that we have started with ELA is clearly articulating a written curriculum in consistent format in all subjects in all ways, K through five. So we're in that process. There's a lot of work to do still. We've developed the parent guides, family guides. We're working on finishing up the curriculum map for ELA and then we'll move on to the other subjects. So it's important that we budget our time in terms of PD times, like the teachers, the time that they need to help on that. The second area is the vision of the graduate. I think one of the things that they noticed is the vision of the graduate is alive and well and a big part of the middle high school. But they want to see it equally embedded in the elementary schools, which makes sense. And then the the last goal area that they set for us. So we have core values at each school and those are more kind of character core values. But we haven't gone through the process of developing core beliefs about learning among all of the elementary teachers and administrators. So that's something that we're in the process of So we have it for character, but you know, what do we all believe in in terms of good teaching?
Thank you, guys. That's beyond impressive that we've gone through so much of that. I can't actually believe that we're only one year into the two-year cycle. Because I feel like we've been talking about so many of these things for so much longer. It's really encouraging and fun. It's one of the fun parts of what we do is getting to see that progress and getting to hear about it, even once our children have moved on. So I'm sure that people have additional questions and comments. I think that we'll start by just doing one round and see how far that gets us. I'm sure that people could go on for a very long time, but we've gotten eight very softs. So, well, we've got much before either of us. So is anybody feeling inclined to start things off? I bet Jake is.
We all have them. Go ahead. Okay. I'll keep my relative here. I'd have some, great job on all of these. Thank you. Specific to EES. I wanted to say thank you for really tackling the issue of the traditions and who serving these traditions because that's hard to do.
Yeah.
It's really hard work to do.
Lots of feelings.
To fix that and to actually make progress on that. So then people are doing that hard work. I have an ongoing concern about equitability that can't be fixed by the school district with the idea of community partnerships. There is nothing that we have in Essex that can match the partnership that Manchester Memorial has with our district department.
I thought you were going to say the next one, the book school.
But yes, no, I'm saying with the perspective of Japan. And it's, again, it's not something that that the school's responsible for. And yet our school has tried, Essex has tried to try and supplement with these partnerships with the senior center, all of these things. But it simply can't be matched. And so I'm putting this out there in the context of school improvement and for our elementary schools that that we have an inequity of opportunity for our elementary H K between our two towns at the town level, simply because of the infrastructure. And so my my ask for just consideration would be if there are ways that we can engage high school students or others, I'm thinking of the robotics half-day program that we have in high school students running forth, which because of the structure that the park scenario program provides can be operated Memorial and not so easily in Essex. That's the thing.
Although we do have four students from Essex that are attending that this year.
Which is awesome. My point is just, it would be really good for our Essex students, for us to find ways that we can supplement what they now can't offer in ways that are appropriate. But but it is just an ongoing.
Yes. Am I hearing you correctly, that is less than an ask of our schools in our districts and more in terms of our community?
It's an ask of all of us to be aware that there is an inequity, and grateful that our elementary school has tried to do what it can to bring that up. And I know we have the YMCA, Florida Child Care, it's simply not the same and there's no getting around it. And so for all of us who are part of our communities as well, just to recognize that.
That's my, that's really, I'm grateful for it, would be good.
I have a question. Can you give me a couple of things of the authentic learning that just that coping on just the things that happened in the classroom?
I actually told the list. Kindergarten does like a community helpers, walking field trips to the bank, the post office, police and fire station. First grade does like friendship workshops, student of the day, week, and interview. Second grade does a project-based learning that they call Soft October, where they they get socks and donate them. They have an integration interview project. Third grade does a Boston Tea Party event. They also do a math family event. Call it a midnight ride. Fourth grade does student-created portfolios, exploratory research project. Fifth grade also with student portfolios, collaboration with Mass Audubon Maritime Foster and Salem Sound Coast Lodge. It's just some examples.
I'll follow up. Thank you. So first of all, thanks for your continued work of alignment and coherence and positive willingness. I appreciate that. I know it's been ongoing. Good to hear that some of you are able to see that the NEAS report is making visible the work we do or kind of recognizing outside people. So I have a couple of things that on their surface feel a little contradictory, and this is one. Where the NEAS report had a future growth, a future area of growth for student learning that leads increased consistent use of best practices that allow students to weave their learning, to have meaningful, relevant, and self-initiated learning experiences. Yet when we talk about authentic learning, it's a list.
Yeah.
And it may be the way the language we're using when we say it's a list. But many of the things you just rattled off were special events or community service kind of things, right? Can you talk a little bit about what that's going to look like in the classroom? And I know you're kind of tasking coaches to do this a little bit, but you know, how how will that actually play out in students' daily experience?
I think I think I know what you're getting at, but in in terms of students guiding their, leading their own learning? Is that kind of what you're talking about?
Yeah, and I'll use the NEAS language again, right? Students lead their learning and have meaningful, relevant, and self-initiated learning experiences.
Yeah. So I think that looks a lot different at the high school than the elementary school. It looks a lot different in fifth grade than it does in kindergarten and first grade. So I think as as students get older, there is a little more kind of guiding, you know, where they want to go with with a with a topic. So Kim mentioned one of the things that they talked about was differentiation. And it's been a big thing in both of our schools over the years. So in terms of, you know, if a student is able to demonstrate that I'm able to do this concept, well, let's take it deeper, let's take it further, that sort of thing. So I think that's kind of how we can make it a little more authentic for kids. It's not just everybody has to go through these under eighty math lessons, those and all. Within the math lesson, we can go in different directions based on kind of how the kids are driving things.
I would just say that when I think of authentic learning, I think of like, how does this lesson apply to my everyday life? So for instance, you're learning about math, you could, you know, it's learning on the next day, which many kids do.
Yep.
You know, so that kind of like along the lines of your
There's many different ways towards the idea of authentic learning. But what I what I don't want it to be is a list, right? Or special events that happen once or twice a year, right? I guess what I'm getting at is what NEAS seems to be getting at, which is how does it get incorporated into our daily practice?
I think what's difficult, Jake, is that right, the very nature of trying to quantify authentic learning is almost like an oxymoron, right? Because we're like taking something that's just happening in the moment and applying it to real life. And so it's, I feel like it's very difficult to do anything other than list it because it's like, oh, this this happened or this was like a one-off, this great conversation that happens super organically in the classroom. But how do we express that? So when I hear the list of the authentic learning experiences, I think it's really difficult for us to know what's behind them. I can say having, it was, I've been lucky enough to know the teacher who does Soft October, right? And so we just say Soft October on the list. It's a special thing they do in October. The process of that is actually the kids identify a problem in their community, right? They read about the spread Montague did Soft October where he realized that homeless people were disproportionately requesting softs whenever they got to shelters. So the kids learn about that. Then they identify a problem in their community and sort of work their way through.
So so can I stop you there? Because I think what you're doing is exactly what I'd love to hear more of, which is you're articulating the practices that are embedded in those experiences, not the name of the activity, but whatever the characters or qualities. But what are the characters or qualities or practices that students and teachers are engaged in?
But inevitably, as a real reading, like I think what Kate's saying, we've brought up that is that. We're listing like my kid last for fifth grade had amazing authentic learning field trips and you can list the field trip. But inevitably, there's a whole curriculum that comes along with that field trip leading up to the field trip. I mean, you you can speak to it probably better than me, but that's just one example of like their cushion.
I completely agree. What I'm saying is, how do we make that visible to people? How do we help?
Yeah.
Make it. And and so this is my second question, which has to do with the coaches. I appreciate that you have the coaches and you put a lot on them this year. Um, and so this, you know, this is one of them. One, one, one aspect of that is, you know, these are new practices you're trying to. Develop and enhance and move, you know, make make regular across the district, right? And coaches are going to help you with that. Yeah, part of what you said, John, was like, we need them to know how we do it now. Right? So which implies that you're kind of strengthening things that are already instantiated.
Absolutely.
Okay, so that's what I want. That's why I put the ask.
Well, so you don't you don't want a coach to walk into a classroom and say. You should use unifix cubes to teach this concept in terms of I do using fist, it teaches concept. So you want them to know how we teach currently before they start making that.
Okay, thank you. So so then. You know, the model that sounds like you're moving towards, which is equitable access of the coaches across all staff. Yet part of the rationale for putting them into place was that we have inequitable. Outcomes now, particularly I'll point to E S now. So why then? Not put more their energy toward those needs and instead distributing people across.
Well, so we we do that. Yeah, we do that through our interventions. So we we collect data on on all of the students in the fall and we identify students who need support. And if there's more of a need in a particular area, we our intervention is solely in that area more. But the coaches, I mean, correct me if I'm wrong, I assume that that resource is something that should be shared equity between. All of the teachers in both schools. Um, and the time is split fifty fifty kind of the way we did the schedule. Um, and there are less teachers at Essex Elementary than there are at Memorial, so. By nature of numbers, it does skew a little bit more towards assets. Um, but there's still an equitable absence for all the teachers.
I see what you're saying, Jake. I think that's I think that's a broader. Good conversation.
Sorry.
I don't know.
So that was my understanding why part of the reason the coaches said.
My understanding is the coaches are for the teachers. To improve their practice and the need was very much identified. And added to the budget because of some red flags in Essex. I wasn't on the committee at that time. That was my understanding of community learning. I think what John is saying about the M T S S, the the model of intervening. An intervention for kids on a one-to-one basis. Is like some of the most impressive work that I've seen done in this district and. Is incredibly powerful in terms of improving those scores. So. I hear what you're saying and I and I am concerned about, you know, making sure both elementary schools are equitable. I. Personally, when it comes to the instructional coaches, I agree with John around that 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 real work of getting kids. The math help or the literacy help that they need takes place in those small groups and incredible. Teachers and interventionists that work with this.
I'll I'll jump in and just offer this. Thank you, guys, because you're reporting on what you call this. They should, and you're not laying out the foundations that are next year, which I think if you look through the district improvement plan. It clearly shows that we are at the beginning stages of getting our arms around authentic learning. So I offer. Uh, a key milestone from our last district improvement plan, which is a common definition, which I am willing to bet will not be the current definition in three years from now. As we gain knowledge at the leadership level, at the teacher level of what this means. So I think what we're trying to capture for you now. Is where we are and we are in the beginning state. We would knock ourselves up as a model of authentic learning for anyone to see right now. So give us grades to learn and grow. And I would offer the same with the coaches. The coaches have been. I think we spent last year trying to get that acclimated to the environment. And that's what you're trying to say, to the environment that they're working in. What are our current practices? Where is there room for growth? What does the data show us? What does the reporting show us? Building relationships. It it sounds. It's an easy thing to say and a common thing to say, but without the relationship, they're going to have no success if we repeat all the next level. So we did have some upticks in scores last year. They are wonderful coaches, but they had. That uptick occurred before they even arrived. So it's not attributable to the coaching. I think the coaching for its effectiveness is a two to three year. Look three years out and you'll start to see impacts because their goal is to attack tier one teaching, not just authentic learning. But also some of the hotspots that we're seeing around poor instructional areas, I'll call them areas for growth. So. I think when we talk about the district improvement plan, you're going to see some new concrete steps. It's much more. Focused in strategy one, uh, when we came into the plan, our heavy focus, being often direction, growth in community was more in social emotional. That's more now in the maintenance and grow as opposed to establish authentic learning was in the establishment. That's now more in the grow and the growth. So I I think we have the. The beginning stages, but I don't think we're in the we're near what we want to be.
Yeah, and and I just want to be clear. I always find these difficult, right? Because we're. We're trying to put a substantive question into thirty seconds or whatever, you know, if we get pressure to do it. So, you know, I I can understand it comes across as a critique, but what I'm really trying to do is is ask the questions that. I hope generates the conversation internally as this is all formed. Because if we get another year out. Right? How how easy is it to change the mavs, right? So really, I'm trying to raise the phrase.
Let's continue. Part of this in the district improvement plan?
Yep.
Um, I will just wrap this portion up by commending you both because I think. This. Improvement plan more than ever has really highlighted for me what a moving target. Everything is, and I've worked in innovation. I know that it's constantly adapting and changing, but I feel like it is. More so now than ever before, changing all the time. And our goals from six months ago might not be our goals. Six months from now, and you guys have done a really great job of adapting. The learning and the process and the the goals as you go. Um, and response to our students and our teachers. All we could ask for. So thank you both.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Great. District Improvement Plan.
It works. So the intent. We have a lot to talk about. So the intent tonight was not to read through the district improvement plan for you. You had it. Um, but to use you and Heather, why don't you come on up? I'm going to. To use you as our first external sounding board. So people who aren't in the ed speaker zone. Um, to to give us some feedback on kind of. Its readability, its capturing. You've seen a lot of the the data reports because it is capturing what you've seen as well, that's some of the areas for growing recommendation. So just a very. Quick piece of background for those who might be tuning in or newer to the process. So the district plan is. Is. Is a site is a piece within the larger ten-year strategic plan. So we will have three iterations of the district plan within that ten-year cycle. And the district improvement plan. Creates the construct and informs school-level planning in a broad sense. But then they also do work in, as you've seen, some more localized needs. And then it should translate. All those plans together should direct educator goal plans, right? So everything should be aligned and we should all be rolling in the right, in the same direction. I think a lot of our data reports, like the AS report and the district report, so we actually do a deep, we have some glitches and we have some places to iron out. Sights, but for the most part, I I think we get credited with having some decent alignment. And having a lot of the work that's in here embedded into our language. So it's not something that sits on a shelf and isn't worked into the work that we do. So the district improvement plan isn't a brand-new strategic plan or brand-new vision. It builds on a current vision and mission. It builds on the strategic priorities outlined in the strategic plan. And then it collects. Um, information and requirements from multiple levels. So there's a lot of federal and and state mandates and requirements, something like the competency determination, for example. Things that come down from the state in terms of requirements, curriculum frameworks, things that we need to adhere to. We have a strategic plan and then we have the data that we gather. We have student data, which is ongoing, but also those periodic cyclical reviews we do at progress. So all of those pieces. Get synthesized together. That's a lot of the work that we did this summer, um, reading through, talking, sharing notes, trying to figure out common points of alignment. So when you go forward, the initiatives are going to remain the same, but what the objectives are to reach this next stage, this next level in authentic learning, this next level in S E L. On our quest toward the improvement plan, those are the pieces that will change a bit. So the objectives and the action steps. And then just a quick reminder that our strategic plan is basically, if you take, if you think of it in terms of a pyramid. Strategic, um, strategic initiative four is almost a standalone. It's kind of a business office strategic plan. It's our financial. It's heavily focused on the budget and some of it is quite dependent on external. Things aligning to our our needs. Uh, goals one, two, three are our curriculum instruction goals, and we use that cute little. Gearbox to show how they're all interconnected. So a lot of our initial attention did go into these three because this is the core of our work. And they all stand alone, but they all work together to create that learning environment, right? So if you think of strategic initiatives, two and three, that's about setting up. A work, a school zone, a school space that's accessible and welcoming and safe for all students so that they can. Reach for their highest potential so they can be supported in striving to meet their individual goals and keep making steps along the way. Um, and then one is focused on kind of the how how we're going to teach them. How do we stay carpet? How do we meet? The kids' needs, how to respond to student voice. I think that's going to be some language you start to hear more of. And that's going to be a little like authentic learning. What we think of initially in student voice may not be. What we define it to be as our experience in comfort with it grow over time and we learn how to use it more. So we're going to like put the training wheels on and. And start slow and hopefully build up capacity as we go. So this is the background, like, why is the district improvement plan dealing with the things that it's dealing with? Well, it's because you've taken all of our, all of the expectations that are out there, all of the recommendations from people who have looked at our programs. And what we're seeing in the student data, whether it be the vocal data, which is more of a cultural piece. Um, or the math data, which is clearly an area that we need to work on. We do have a couple of questions around that. It's not explicit to any one thing. It's not a district improvement plan that says we're going to get the scores up by twenty percent in the next three years. That's not how we've operated. I guess the question is, should it be how we operate going forward? Are we still comfortable with that? I I know coming in. When I thought, like, with a lot of new people coming in, you have to be the historian, the historian. We were very much in the full child conversation before it became the conversation we had to have because. There was a period, I would say, in the like the two thousand five to ten era when. The pressure of testing test scores and results was resulting in a high level of, like, there were suicides among students. Metro Western in particular, high-performing schools, where there started to be concern about. Too much pressure on them to deliver a number. So I think we were getting in. And we have carried that through. We have, as much as we do offer. A lot of A P s, I don't know that we are. Valuing student experience by the number they get. Um, in itself, choice to get in them and it's access to them. So we've not, we've stayed away from kind of those hard number. Growth statistics, but if you think, I mean, that's a conversation to have. If you think it's time we revisit it and you think there's value there, I have the first, I have a strong opinion, but. I I think we're willing to hear that feedback because we did talk a little bit about whether or not there needed to be more of a. Very specific performance data oriented role. Um, in objective. So we want to sit back and kind of hear your inputs. And that will inform our next stage of development. It will go out in the next newsletter to parents and the community members for feedback. Um, and then we'll have another version back to October. Discuss.
We want to structure this. Sorry, I'm not this far. I mean, we can start with a very low-level question, which is. This news, go ahead. Why don't you just start? So. As I was saying about the elementary school improvement plans. This all feels like such a moving target and I feel like we're starting to see, right, the pendulum's always swinging and the pendulum now is starting to move back. So we have goals set around. I don't want to say that inclusion is not in vogue anymore. Like, obviously, it's part of our community's culture regardless. But I do remember some of the youth surveys that we did where we asked students if we saw them, if they saw themselves reflected. In the materials that they were learning at in school and their responses, I think, were. Surprisingly more no than yes. Uh, and so I think it's really tricky to, I don't know where I I think it's just worth having the conversation of. How much window do we want to provide our students to the world, the huge, vast, amazing world outside of Manchester and Essex? And how much mirror do we want to give them where they see themselves reflected in their learning and they see their relevance and. Their spot and they feel comfortable in that spot. I think that's, I guess, maybe the constant. Balance that we're turning to strike.
I mean, I see that as something coming inevitably out of. A couple of elements that I love are like really empowering students here to participate in. In these initiatives. So standard one, the bottom one, elevate student voices by fostering relevance, engagement and regard for student perspectives, like. I'm not saying, Kate, like, I agree with you. We need to be mindful of that. But if we're truly doing that. Then students are going to be calling for that as well, like. That that's going to come hand in hand. So that was a very, and then it's also under standard two. Student leadership opportunities through building level programs. I mean. I feel like especially at this age. That's the type of thing that's at top of mind for them and no matter what they're learning.
I mean, I have this.
Yeah. I'm I'm not saying it should be put on them by any means. Just connect the two.
So my input on this is that a lot of these. Um, strategic plan that we're working with right now is culture work. I do that from day one is what we're in and we are in it and I. Even though we're maybe hearing. A little bit more over time about, uh, you know, questions about scores and things like that. I think a lot of that is budget-driven and a need to. Identify the value of what we're getting in the difficult budget conversations we've had over the years. So my input on that front would be not to. Um, I would, I would be in favor of staying the course with the the outlook that we have during this strategic plan cycle. With the understanding that in the next strategic plan cycle, we may want to have a little bit more guided discussion in bringing in community voice on. Do we want to start balancing and getting more from the outside on that? Um, whether we really need to start talking more and building into our goals about. Numbers and scores and that sort of thing, or whether the community does still feel that that this is the focus, that people are going to start to hear both. And and have that be reflected in our strategic plan more than it was last time. I really like the breakdown of the action steps and deliverables. Um, in this format, the the way they're broken down. But especially in standards one through three.
And that was the question. It's going to get muddied up because we have to layer a little bit more explanation to the the standard.
Yep.
We didn't go with the column of who's responsible. Do you want it? Does it, does it not change?
For for me, the input here is I like it like this. I I I.
Okay.
I like having the broader picture at the district level. And then, again, the school improvement plans are based off. The individual school level items from from these. But the only thing I feel. Um, might be of benefit somewhere here, and I'm not sure how quite to represent it because I'm talking separately from. Uh, standard four is. Any budget implications for some of these steps? Would be nice to have.
The way it's set up. The way it's set up, we were talking, I think we can go back and almost highlight in green, anything that has a budget. And we would have Jay, uh, Jay's in my head, like.
The last one just didn't have a lot of things we have to spend money on. This one does have a few more.
It's done that way. Because of the conversations we've been having.
Yeah. And it kind of the stage of learning, but this one does have some lines in there where there's going to be different stuff.
Yeah. So that's the only thing I'm missing here.
I could have been greened.
Or you've always the separate column with a little, you know.
It's always. One, two, or three dollars.
Like the spiciness. We're demoing one of the links, like with our new site and how we're setting up, I think pop link, hot links were the what I wanted last time. The way we were set up on the site, we couldn't do it. But I think we'll have more luck. So we reference the current yellow cycle because that's going to map, instead of mapping it out in this document, that maps out every year was getting tackled. Like we can also embed like, um, you off definition of authentic learning link, but a UDL link, because they're they're, by virtue of what it is, there's going to be some as you speak in there, but we're trying to get as accessible as possible.
My input is that it feels very accessible and, and I like that breakdown especially. Um, this is very, it flows easily and straightforwardly, instead of your adding links for people who do want the further questions. Um, I, I appreciate that.
Do you want to jump in?
I'm still trying to learn.
Okay. I just don't want to hog all the time. So, um, first of all, I think all the opinions in this are good. They're all the things we've been talking about. They're all the things I expected to see. Um, so I appreciate the, I, I particularly appreciate that it comes across as having a curriculum instruction focus. Um, which, um, is right in line with where I think we've all been talking, you know, in terms of uh, changes that, that are in, in motion and whatnot. Uh, so I pretty appreciate that. My big takeaway from this is that it still feels like laying foundations rather than moving forward. And that was your big message for the last three years was those three years were laying the foundation for us to move forward. And this still feels like laying a foundation. And I don't want laying the foundation to go on forever. And it may, it may be, it may be some of the words you've used. Okay. Um, you know, there are words like implement, right? Which just don't, I don't know what you mean by that. And maybe specifying that might help a little bit, but particularly how you've broken down FY twenty six, FY twenty seven, foundation pilots. That, that just feels like, again, we're, we're in this, you know, laying foundation mode. So, so I just, any tweaking that can be done to make it at least sound a little bit more.
I'm missing, I feel like I'm missing something, Jake. This is the three-year plan.
Yep.
And this is year one. Are you saying that? I feel like laying the foundation is appropriate in year one. Can you explain?
What I'm saying is the last three-year plan was framed as laying foundations for a lot of these efforts. Three years of laying a foundation.
But so when we look, when we look.
Not the same exact effort, but setting this up for many of these things.
You're saying by not starting from zero.
Exactly. Exactly. Where we should be more in implementation mode, moving forward mode rather than foundation pilot.
Or how do these differ from prior?
But so when you look, say, down to the verbs underneath, um, this will be your twenty seven, this will be your twenty eight. Do you see those as constructive enough? Or are you saying that you have to?
I'm saying, I'm saying what are, what are the actual things that we're going to, I mean, you know, define and articulate, uh, pilot, um, audit, design and pilot, develop, root development. I mean, these are all, I thought we had a lot of these things, right? Uh, some of these things at least. I'm not, I'm not going to go through individually what they are. I'm just saying this is the, this is the sense I'm taking away at the big picture scale. Right? And I was expecting to see more of let's move than let's lay foundations. That's, that's my.
So how we, what does let's move look like then?
I, I think, you know, you have, you know, strengthen, um, you know, to reflect changes in instructional practice, expand implementation, elevate. I just don't know what expand implementation means, what elevate means, right? Though it may be some, maybe some line moral smart goal. I don't, I don't know if, I don't know if it has to be a smart goal, but you know, elevate student voice by fostering relevance, engagement in regard for student perspectives in the classroom. Great. So what are the, what are the elements of that?
I find it that nebulous language because I think it's meant to be such a broad document that it has to be implemented for four-year-olds all the way through eighteen, nineteen-year-olds. So.
Yeah. But then, you know, the, the bullet, you know, the action step deliverable is collect and analyze data on student access, representation and achievement to identify gaps. That's foundation, right? Then we have, you know, that would be.
Also disparate versus school versus teacher. So we're sending out the framework to coordinate the action at the whole district level. Build capacity for the implementers. So the trickle-down effect gets to a different level of implementation.
Well, this one, this one only has one year and the one they happen to pick.
Of our readiness.
I'm, I'm just trying to think, this is my takeaway from it, right? It may not be what you're actually planning. That's just the sense I got, I think, coming away from it. And maybe it's just tweaking a few little bits here and there. Maybe it is, I don't know what exactly the, you know, conversation for behind this or where you're going with it, but it still felt me, the way it was framed, the way the overall message I got. Well, it definitely feels like forward progress and it definitely feels like, you know, breaking instruction focus, which is stronger. Um, and I agree with everything that's in here, right? Um, my only take, my only commentary back to you was,
Yep.
I thought we were going to be moving a little bit more than this, than this seems to represent.
Are there, were there gaps from a prior improvement plan? I ask those for examples. If I look on, um, expand implementation of vision of the graduate for FY twenty seven foundation, we say begin aligning vision of the graduate classroom opportunities and exist student, that's very strict work on field experiences. So was that not done? Does that identify as a gap that now?
High school's done some work, but K eight has done not.
So maybe that's where the.
I will say that K eight has been identified as an area where we should be intending to pulling out the vision of the graduate in a more cunning way.
So maybe that would be an opportunity to say the focus here is K through N. So it's not, it hasn't happened at all in the district.
Still work to do.
There's still, but you're not beginning.
We're not beginning.
So maybe capture more where you've already done work and you're just improving versus where there's a gap that, you know, started to do with us. That helped.
Yeah, with those kinds of things too, that's okay.
Why are we in a ten-year cycle? That's not strategic. Uh, this bit four strategic initiative. That's the strategic plan is the ten-year. Distraction for me, that's three years, school improvement, two years. You know, the graduate. Um, I, I think I disagree. I hadn't. I have to say, I think, because I had the cartoon, so you erase the point. Um, but I did just open up the district improvement plan, uh, progress report to the end of last year to try to compare because I was wondering if you were basing it off of, like, weren't we supposed to achieve these in the last district improvement plan? But I think that these are new areas of growth. Um, I don't know if maybe it's not giving us enough credit to say that we're just beginning this, but I think that it's fair to say that we're just beginning the focused targeted work in some of these areas. And I had a good starting point for that is to see what already exists, which is the first theme on the list.
That is why I. Make your suggestions. Food for thought that one thing that might be helpful in making that connection between that, because we're still in the same strategic plan cycle, might be brief. A what executive summary of, of connecting, you know, the, the district improvement plans, the work that came before to this. And then that way there's just a short, you know, one page to book narrative of how we got to this that connects so that it, it's clear that we're not starting from point one. Um, but we don't have to necessarily revamp all of what's in here because I think that especially for someone coming in and, and it is mostly people who pay attention to the stuff that are going to be reading this, but for someone coming in, it's accessible. It's understandable and accessible. So maybe if we were able to just put some context briefly at the start of it, that might help bridge that gap. Were the standards the same? Or the standards? The, the, the standard, those are the strategic initiatives.
Are the same.
They're the same. Yeah. So then it could be done maybe by Stan. I would, I wouldn't, I would just.
It is, it is done by our, and they're already broken down.
A lot is out standard.
And so much, it's just, you can say strategic priority. Yeah. I, I do feel like I don't much of a vislon on the. So, but it's just. Yeah.
Yeah. And again, I'm not questioning the work. I'm questioning how it comes across and then, you know, given particularly given the, the rationale we made for the last three years as laying foundations. That's all I'm saying.
We're always laying the foundation in our future. I believe that children are our future. Teach them well. Um, Pam, are there any specific questions that would be helpful for you to take away? Answers. Questions.
Um, one of that was on the structure of the public standard, standard and strategic. Um, whether or not that flow on side is the three steps. I mean, we need to take foundation off it. It's the foundation that could be totally different.
It could just say this. I think what I'm struggling with isn't really the, the structure of it, but the reality of where we are versus where people would like us to. Because I, I mean, I can speak for the team and what we read in other reports and we feel like we're being responsive to where we told we are, which is we're not much, we're not much further than what we're looking for. Cause some things were brand new and some things are still hard to get implemented in the day to day. So we're looking at it in terms of what the curriculum office or what the special education offices, district-wide responsibility is, and that is to create the systems and structures for implementation at the school. The implementation relies on the teacher. But if the teacher isn't feeling like they are prepared to do it, we're going to have a hard time getting them are. So we might want to be, I would, there are things that have been ten years in the making that I wish we were further along on, but we're still just trying to get up to speed. I mean, inclusion has been on our, our list for fifteen years, but it's something that I think you're always starting from square one because I think it's something that we are never really going to. Uh, the collective way in education are always struggling. So I'm taking the point and I'm trying to figure out how to change the language, but also to be honest about what our undertaking is for to get them there and what the work is going to be that we're going to have to do. Um,
I would rather you be honest and.
Absolutely.
And I think that like, maybe the language could be tweaked a bit. I get to take your point about foundation. I haven't had the long view that you've had, like in this work to feel the way that you're feeling, but I, I have said, I feel like this document really captures a lot of what I've been hearing in the community and been asking for as a community member. And kind of hopeful for, like I see authentic learning and I see student voices and you know, I see MTSS and I see, you know, curriculum and instruction. Uh, and I, you know, I see universal design for learning and my multilingual learn, but it, it's so comprehensive. It, it's, it's very overwhelming to be honest with you. That it, it, that in itself almost explains to me why we can't just kind of go through and be like, well, we did this, this, this and this, because there is so much all the time that schools are trying to do. And it's always a moving target because there's always something new, some new initiative, some new mandate, some new, something the community is calling for. So it doesn't surprise me that foundations are here and also makes this great effort.
I think cash flow is a great example, right? So if we send UDL and took a poll, we have some people who are experts in UDL. They're implementing it. It's done. Right? It's going. We have other people who are like, you do what? I'm all ready for that trade. But they, they know it. We know it as a concept. We're not necessarily doing it. So if, if you want it really to be implemented as a systemic, regularly occurring expectation, it's more than just saying, yeah, we've got some people who are doing it. Cause I think we're always struggling with, um, the consistency by which we're doing it, the levels at which we're doing it. So we might have pockets of people who are tired of hearing about it in-house and out of house, but I don't think we can say honestly that we are at a level of implementing, we are implementing it as a systemic expectation which people are being.
I can jump into, I think the piece, if I was my like gut reaction is, I think for that initiative, that first initiative, we are really like, we're starting line. Like we're warmed up and ready. So I think if that one reads as new, like we have not made as much progress in that authentic learning as we have in the other places. So if that one's reading, starting from, from my perspective, I think we really are like, that is the place that we haven't made the, the, the growth that we would, I would say that the district has made in the areas of social, emotional learning, cultural competency. Those, if they're reading, like it feels like a restart. I think for those pieces, my, my initial reaction is those are a little iterative. When you're thinking about like the cultural competency, if you read it, it sounds very different than the first pass because what we're thinking about is expanding. When we're talking about cultural competency, we're not only talking about race. We're now thinking about what does it mean if you're a multilingual learner? What does it mean if you have learning differences and how does that impact culture and how do we create inclusive spaces and attend to that in our environments? Similarly with social, emotional learning, it may be that it's more fleshed out and we've made some significant progress. But in my opinion, the next iteration of that is it needs to go beyond elementary to be fully implemented towards all the way up through twelve. So some of those pieces might read like a restart, but the restart might be, it's an expansion. It's a continuation. It's taking levels of mastery and, and growing them either by level or by our depth of understanding. However, page one, first one, in my opinion, you're, we're, we're at a that is, I would say we've made probably the least amount of progress. Is that fair, Pam? As a district of the three. And so if that one's reading as relatively starting, starting line, like I think that's kind of fair. Um, and, and there's a lot of space for growth. And that one is really messy, right? Cause that one's really complex to capture. Um, and it's really complex to try to identify like, what does it look like and sound like? Because in the end, that's like, what does it mean to learn? What are we asking our kids to do? How are we asking them to engage in content and learning experiences? And, and what are the conditions we're asking our teachers to create across levels with all the learners in the room, across content, across schools, right? So that one for me, it's super exciting and I'm pumped and it does feel truly more foundational in my opinion. The other two, it, that one for me is like we're iterating that to a next more complex level. I don't know if that helps or.
Level, it's always preparing the people to do the work and supporting the people in their growth so that they have full understanding and capacity to be a UDL expert so that they can design. So the real implementation is at the individual level, which is why the theory of the case is it links down to the school and then the teacher improvement. So you're never going to see in this plan what it's going to look like at the classroom level. Or what that implementation would look like. That's your unit design.
You have the document that sits in the way below this that says, okay, uh, to know if we're on track with the action steps and deliverables we've set for ourselves for FY twenty six, we expect these results or we expect these passed up and completed, whatever it is. And kind of like a smart goal, but something that lets you say, yeah, we're on track or no, it looks like we didn't like do what we.
That's what we'll report at the end of the year. And we used to have a column that were just specific things that we were going to do. And that we did take out and went more with the combo broadstep and. And I think, I think of that as the school, I am sorry, is that the is sort of more what's happening when we round with level in a shorter time to support these. That makes sense?
So that's where I leave the book for then.
Well, and if you look at the old plan, there was like a li, a whole column of the, of the, the physical deliverables, things we were going to bring you to show the evidence. And the feedback was that the moving target, a lot of those changes changed. So the one thing that makes sense now to do three years from now, it doesn't necessarily make sense. And it, I think the feedback was it was more things we were going to do and less about impacts we were going to try to make. So what we tried to evolve to do was put the, what we're hoping that if we are successful in meeting our objective, what they'll start to see. Was put the, what we're hoping that if we are successful in meeting our objective, what they'll start to see. For students, which we started to introduce at that district that was reporting at the end of last year. So, and I think that's the challenge with this document. Some people like the report cards, some people like the scorecard. Some people like, you know, tell me what it's going to look like for my kid. Um, so it's going to be hard to capture and make something readable, but I, I think we're hearing what you're saying and we're going to try to make some adjustments.
So now you have, for example, in the authentic learning where it says. Sorry, I'm scrolling back and forth between pages now. Um, at the very beginning, right at the top, foundation define and articulate shared pre K through 12 expectations. And then the next one is conducted inventory of current practices by grade band and creates level matrices. Of strengths and gaps. If we went back to. The elementary school improvement plan. They had said that they would have listed current authentic learning activities. And that coming up for this year in their action steps, they have additional authentic learning activities implemented, evaluated and documented. Expand novel authentic learning experiences at each grade level. So I think of those as directly supporting. The first bullet point in the greater improvement plan, but that was for level.
But that's exactly why I asked the question in two principles, because when I hear that in the school improvement plan, I hear it's expand the list. Whereas what this is saying, which, which.
So I didn't hear it expand the list.
Which I completely agree with, which is, you know, what are the practices, right? What are the qualities? What are the? Um, expectations, right? And that's where we were going in that back and forth between you and I, Kate, right? So, so I like this, right? And if this language was in the school improvement plan, yes, I could see that connection.
Well, doesn't this trickle down into.
It should, should in the next.
So next year.
Yeah.
Note it. Next year's school improvement plan.
But now they both worked on the list for three years at that point, by the time they get there. Right? And, and not have gotten into practices yet. If that's, if we're waiting a year for that to trickle down to the smoothness.
Is there any more pressing feedback that anybody wants to pass on to Pam?
I think something we want to go back and try to. Make more. Is that when we had our conversations and when we, when we walked through this, to me, one of our glaring. This is the 10 year quest, more than 10 year quest. Artic, so there's a lot of matrices in articulations and documents because we struggle to have them. We have departments of one. Um, so it's bringing, it's really bringing people to understand. We talked a lot about this at the elementary level, right? So the, the growth we have to go through to move to a common literacy program. To try, to have common alignment of using the same materials and working at both schools. That's, that's worth coming now to the middle of the high school in terms of having a solid articulated curriculum. Whether it's assessments. Benchmark, uh, assessments of skills for students, really getting everybody into a system. So the system is driving the instruction. And the instructors are designing for students. So we have to, we're still working on flipping the system to grade the conditions. So teachers can be focused on how do I design a more authentic learning experience in my classroom? We're still trying to bring people from understanding. They're not writing the curriculum for the fifth grade. So we'll figure out a way to make that more prominent, but we really are at a, at starting in a very different. Starting with a lot of challenges, um, in terms of pulling people away from the. Maintaining academic autonomy in terms of choice for ancillary materials and things like that, but getting people to convert to a more systematized approach. So it, it's coherent from K1. And I think that's, that's a lot of the work that you see in here, but maybe you have to make it more clear. Cause until we have those foundational pieces, it's still going to be like. We're still going to be putting out fires of somebody, you know, running ahead and being, you know, the authentic classroom, but model classroom from the district and answering the question, what they can do with here, why isn't it happening here? Because we haven't made the case yet for the entire faculty that you need to be working with the system, not just within your own. So it's creating the orchestra from a lot of solo players and, and that's, that is what is underlying on these pieces. That, you know, we need to play.
I think, I, I don't know, I probably want to move on. I did notice one thing missing. Which under long-term partnerships and collaboration under sustainable multi-year operational budget strategic four. I didn't, I saw something about establish a process, the very, very last bullet, establish a process for annual review of revenue through partnerships and funding models. I mean, do we want to say anything in here about? Collaboration with the towns. Towns are asking for collaboration. And I'm in favor of communication.
So there was inputs on that and then we struggled and debated. About what is a district? Improvement goal and what is more of a committee goal?
Yeah, that's what I was wondering as well.
So we are, I mean, I'm kind of open to the discussion about how we frame it and where it belongs and what is it that is on? Like the district as a school organization and committee as a.
So that might be another time.
I would say that'd be more on us.
Yeah.
And we've, we've glittered on ourselves. So I wouldn't. Put that necessarily on the district directly.
Yep, but it could be a joint. In, well, in particular, I, because it is something in district improvement plan, it replies on response and engagement from someone outside the district. To be, to be that, I mean, it runs it.
Um, I'd like to move on to the graduation and competency determination recommendation. So if you think of other things that you're driving home or you wake up and are having your coffee in the morning, I think that's a really good conversation.
Can I share too? So it will be a couple of comments so anybody can, can have input in. And I don't know if Pam had shared this at the last meeting, I wasn't here, but. One of the first steps, you know, post. Data summary and some summer workshop at the admins is our staff had a chance to look at this on the first day of school. Did she share that process with you? Um, so they actually had a chance to connect with their tables and read each of the different big pieces and provided their input into what those are. Um, and, and identified some of the action steps that they were thinking that, what support would they need to move it forward? What did they think was really critical to include? So our staff had that chance to help build those pieces as well through that first, first day, you know, collaborative engagement, which really came up with some really important. Steps that are, that are reflected in that as well. So that we had that chance to get their voice in. Um, from their perspective of where they are and where we need, you know, some of that calibrating that starting point, which is, you know, not shockingly variable with where everybody's entering the work, but, um. So then this will be, you know, again, like keep, keep arriving and now up here, we'll get the chance to, that was closer to that, that.
So keep the format. Try to tune some of the language.
And context, honest, honest context.
Background slash. Here's where we got here. This is what we've accomplished. This is what we're still working on. We will send you our.
Yeah. Sorry, did I, did I go backward?
We're going to do a time check. It's eight 13. I have to pick up the child from soccer practice at, at nine. So the last one, we're going to a public hearing at the next session in October. Um, it is, so those quick synopsis of how we got here is last. There was a ballot vote to eliminate MCAS in the graduation requirement. MCAS still exists rate, phrase three to 10. It's used for benchmarking. Been used for a variety of things, everything from, from school, which I was to.
Bi-literacy.
Bi-literacy.
It's full of gun.
It's full of gun. So MCAS exists and is in play. What we've been asked to do is in lieu of the graduation requirement, um, of MCAS. Defining that a student met a certain level of competency in, in, in particular areas, we have to do that. So this is, um, the MASC draft policy. Updated to reflect our local competency determination path for students at the high school level. It tracks to what the, the frameworks say. They have to do in order to meet the competency determination and we simply needed to align it to our existing course. So what we talked about today, and it was really helpful to have that conversation at the policy level, which is. To be clear, the student both needs to complete the course and success, successfully complete the course and successfully complete the assessment. At the end of that course to receive credit for the competency for checking the competency box. So all of this does right now is it addresses the one single component of graduation requirements called competency determination. Julie's going to bring graduation requirements in December. We've moved up the program of studies to the beginning half of the year. So we have more time and any time we need to take at the committee level doesn't bump into our schedule. Um, it gives them a little time. It should work out quite nicely on the board. So right now, to satisfy our state requirement of being able to tell them. What the kids need to accomplish here to satisfy the competency determination, we need to, um, craft and publish as a policy. So.
Yeah. So to be clear, we are not developing. Our own graduation requirements right now. We already have those and they're. Very comprehensive and they are reviewed regularly.
Yes, and this aligns current coursework. That meets specific state level requirements and says this course equals this competency. Pass the course, pass the assessment, you've met the competency determination.
And just to be clear, we're, we are one of the only states, I think, in the country that does not have state level graduation requirements beyond. This local competency determination. And when it was MCAS, it was just pass the MCAS. That was the only state grad, everything else was locally determined. There's recommendations. Math score is a recommended program of studies, which many districts adopt, including essentially us. But this, this was the state's graduation requirement, pass MCAS, it would be three subjects. And now that we can't do that because of the ballot, that's why it's on us to now do it local.
So MASC provided. Just a template for this and we essentially added what?
So if we go to the start on course.
Thanks. And why we put in the language at the end that says. Um, if we were involved in the office, perhaps it's, it's probably why they, they, well, not because they're going to be competitive determination requirements. We can also transfer.
That is a mandated part of what we have to include, which basically is like. You know, grandfathering it. Like if you, if you would have received a diploma that MCAS offered you, we can now revisit.
Yeah, I wondered if it was that.
The state is requiring.
And yes, it takes your requirements, your legal obligations and just fills it down into like a policy template. And then you can talk to my, for your local.
That's the state's requiring that you allow folks who may have been prevented from receiving their diploma because of an MCAS passing to have a review.
Really have people, I just worry because I look at the review process that you have, which makes sense to me. And I worry about people and documentation not necessarily being available. That would be so few people who would know it. So we're not looking, we're not going to suddenly have that the gates will not be flooded.
So keeping in mind that this is. Just a competency requirement. And that it is tailored to meet. The requirements of the state. Does anyone have any questions for our feedback?
I like to call that base. Classes when we talk, like we say, English nine all levels. English 10 all levels, but then you have these, there's some classes.
And you.
Is that different than all levels?
I don't know if Julie wants to jump in there. Um, so what the state has asked us to do is identify any courses that are currently potentially ever offered from our. Course offerings that would meet their criteria of aligned courses. So the state then actually released and said, these course codes would meet these ELA requirements. So we then did an alignment of our, our courses that are those course codes and then named them based on. What DECE asked us to do. So.
But we, we don't have these titles in our program studies.
Right, because they're not, so if there are.
And let me be very direct and going to it more. These are special education courses, so they're not courses a student can self-select, but they're forces in, that we offer, they're coded. And if a student is in ACE by prescription, then they, they can pass the competency by passing ACE humanities. They wouldn't ever really appear okay, so.
But are those not equivalent to? Other levels of.
They are equivalent to, but if a student enrolled on their transcript, that course code would show up as this, which is why we have to name it as saying this would meet that criteria.
Alright, so I have, I have two things. Uh, and again, you know, this is a, this is just a task we have to do and, you know, this is not holding it up. But two things that I think we do need to change in the language. One is, um, on the first page, under competency determination requirements, right above the content area table. Um.
Yep.
Have satisfactorily completed coursework and earned full credit in accordance with the district's grading policy. We have no grading policy. So that needs to change. I will say, separate from this conversation, it does raise the question for me. Like the whole purpose of the competency determination and MCAS itself is ensuring alignment and achievement of. Standards, right? Knowledge and, and skills and practices and the standards. And if we have no kind of common expectation around grading, how do we ensure that's indeed happening for each and every class? That is not.
Purpose of the vote.
Yeah, that is not related to this. Right? Uh, that's, that's a, well, that, that vote actually sent to the local level. So in a way that kind of raises this, this conversation. Not for this local, or not for this policy. Uh, the second thing on page two, under additional considerations, students with disabilities. Uh, those who have been placed in out of district placements must meet the requirements of the competency determination policy of the placement school difference. My understanding is. And maybe this is unique to the competency determination and this might be a legal question or a DECE question, I don't know. Um, but my understanding is any out of district student should be meeting our requirements. They are still our students.
Yeah, we are the place.
Yeah, that's the place in this work.
We're placing that is basically.
Us and elsewhere.
Oh, okay. I missed that. Sorry. With the placing.
Yeah.
Okay.
Well, that sucks.
Alright, so that confirms it ourselves. Okay. That's it.
So we have language though in this that reference of the grading policy that doesn't exist, like it. Can we do, can we pass this if that doesn't exist?
No, not this. District grading policy is coming up.
Okay.
So I have, um, one thing that I'll say before word that I said earlier today in our subcommittee meeting, just that, um, when. When people look at this and are able to access this, I think that since we use the phrase, and of course, assessment. To mean a combination of successfully passing the course, like the grade for the course and. The, the final, whether it's an exam or a portfolio or a capstone experience, whatever that is for the course, since we mean. It to include both of those things is the evidence of mastery is the end of course assessment. I think we should define that somewhere. So it's very clear. What, what that actually means. Um, in black and white.
Wait, wait, uh, can you say that again?
Um, in the evidence of mastery and like under aligned courses, says evidence mastery is the end of course assessment.
What page?
One and two, bottom of one, the table, the tape and the column on the right.
Oh.
The evidence of.
Okay, that column, yeah.
Is the end of course assessment. And we're saying that the end of course assessment to, to determine competency, to the evidence of mastery is a combination of having. Received a passing grade in the course and passing the final exam, which might be an exam, but it might also be a capstone project. So like a portfolio, whatever it is.
Completion and, and of, and.
So like happening. You have, that, that what that end of course assessment is.
Then we should say that pair everywhere.
Yeah, that's what, that's what I, that's what I'm saying.
Okay, like in the first paragraph, and satisfactorily completed coursework. Right? Put that pair right in. Is that anywhere is, anywhere, yeah.
I'm saying we need to clarify that that's what that means, that it means those two things. And then, um, on behalf of our student representative, two questions that you don't have to answer right now, but that will. Want to come forth would be, um, for AP courses, does, does the AP score count as evidence of mastery or are we still talking about the AP?
So yeah, so, so to back up just a little bit, this is really essentially what this is doing is taking the place of what MCAS did. The only thing that's above and beyond is the US history one. So students would take their MCAS most often. Freshman sophomore year. And so it, it's really looking at two full year completion of ELA. You're looking at one full year of a lab science. You're looking at the two math courses, algebra one and geometry, which may be theoretically taken in eighth grade, ninth grade or ninth grade, 10th grade, or, or whatever that may be. Um, so these criteria are actually. Not necessarily. Would, 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 would be met prior to most students enrolling and engaging in the AP.
Yes, but we talked about this earlier and that's not necessarily the case because you could fail final. Yes, but we talked about this earlier and that's not necessarily the case because you could fail a final exam and still pass a course.
But AP isn't one of the courses to earn your competency determination. You're not open to AP until you take nine.
That's something that, that we'll need to explain because the way we talked about it earlier today was if you only have to demonstrate competency for two years of ELA, right? And you, let's say freshman year, you bomb the final week, so pass the course, alright, and then sophomore year did the same. You now don't have two years if you're thinking of taking AP courses to make up that difference.
That's true.
So, so that's, that's just.
You maybe shouldn't.
The need wants that best. And that's, that's what I, that may be the case, but there are all sorts of reasons people register for different levels of different. So the question was just.
So these are the courses you have to pass to get your competency.
Yeah, so it won't even be involved in that.
Bond ninth grade.
You guys.
I'm probably.
Yep.
Going back into twoninth grade English again.
Got it.
Or if you suddenly become a student and you're, you know, it was just a blip and there was life circumstance.
Yep.
You might need to take English ten and English eleven.
Yeah, okay. So I won't worry about that. Then the other question is, um, if there, how this timing, is this immediate?
This will be effective.
This will be effective this year.
It's eight twenty six. I need to leave in imminently. Uh, so we still have the finance and operations. I had emailed a question. Michelle already answered it for me. Can I hand the gavel to Teresa? So you already.
Thank you.
Thanks.
So again, we'll, we'll have this on the agenda next time so you can ponder it some more. We're going to make those adjustments. Um, Jake could email me about the touching the grading policy, which is a question. And the end of course assessment plus makes perfect sense. Like I said, we were pretty deep in this, so it all made sense to us when we were looking at it, but. Same.
And then just the timelines, who we have a public hearing next time.
Yep, and then we'll come back to you on the final version.
Okay.
On the twenty first.
Okay, we'd like to. Yes, we're going to move on now to the finance and operations director's update.
Okay, so we have a few things. Um, our last meeting, we briefly discussed um our last minute notification of the increase of our audit costs. Um, my meeting was unfortunate because our audit is actually scheduled to begin in about two weeks. So um I did reach out to two other firms, um firms that I am familiar with who are very frequent in knowing the municipal school industry, um Roselli Clark Associates and CLA Clifton Larson. I got quotes from both of them as well. Um. I have a piece of paper. So right now, or, or the past year, we have had a base audit. An audit for our end of year report, those two things are required. And then we had a third piece, which is our E and D preparation. Um, it was something the district contracted with, with the transition between Avi and myself. Um, so when Cbis gave us the quote, because they're not honoring the pricing of the previous firm, they gave us a total quote of forty seven thousand five hundred, which was a fifteen thousand dollar increase we talked about last week. So I've gone round and round. Like I said, I, I reached out to two other firms, Roselli Clark and Associates could offer um actually shoot backpack, I'm sorry, the E and D preparation. So going forward, if we were to do that, that is a six thousand dollar cost this year. That is something that I can do. I used to be an auditor. I went through Powers and Sullivan. Um, so I can easily take on that task and save us the six thousand dollars, whichever firm we go to. So when I reached out to the other two firms, I did not ask for a quote on that piece of E and D preparation. I just asked for a quote for a base audit and end of year report audit. Roselli and Clark came in for a total of thirty three thousand for those two pieces and Clifton Larson came in somewhere between forty and forty five. Um, they adopted a formal quote, but they said if we want to go forward, we do certainly give you um a form, a formal quote of that. Um, I do have experience with both of those firms as well as ZBIS, Harley Powers and Sullivan. Unfortunately, due to the timing, both of those other two firms cannot guarantee the audit before the end of March, which is technically our reporting deadline due to having borrowed. So we have to have some type of financial statement submitted to our financial advisors for borrowing purposes by the end of March. There are workarounds that we can do, issue draft financials, but neither one of the other two firms could definitely fit us in before the end of March. Um, which certainly makes things a little trickier. Um, with that being said, in the lateness in this year, I would recommend that we continue with Cbis for one more year. We take in that E and D preparation and we go forward with a total cost of forty one thousand five hundred for those two pieces of the audit that are required. This card here, it is an increased cost, but given the timing and the schedule, we might think we're really just going to rock and hard place. Um, and then I would like to go forward in speaking with Roselli Clark and see if we can contract them in future years because actually on the list serve for the past two days. Everyone else is in the same, same position we are, and they're all talking about these other firms. So I'd like to line up something for next year because if we can get it to their schedule now, we will be scheduled for next fall.
And can they lock in a price?
Yes, like. We can do, we can do a one year and some, most times you do it three year when it's a brand new audit firm because they do a ton of work the first year. So in order to, you know, put in that extra work, it's usually a three year.
Okay, so clarifying questions. Anyone?
Okay, sounds reasonable, given where we are.
I just wanted to make sure we're okay with.
Pam has one.
Who just, Avi used to do E and D too until we went through that big transition. So it's great that she's got the time and energy and skill to do it. I did ask her to confirm for you and for myself or whoever's left in case of accident that the firms are capable and willing to do E and D for a fee. Um, because there are some years where anything could happen and we'd have timelines and deadlines we depend on. So.
Yep. It's usually a five to six thousand dollar ticket item, I guess.
My question, and my clarifying question was about that because each year we, we get questions about our timeliness of E and D prep and certifying our E and D. So are you confident that you're going to, that you're going to have the personal resources here bandwidth to accomplish that?
We have a lot of complaints, but yes.
Okay.
It's eight.
And we know that this does not have to go out to bid. Do you need a vote on this? Do you need a vote of support to move this forward?
I think what I'd like to do is maybe have the firm meet with the finance subcommittee just so that they can kind of do an interview similar to what we did with the treasury.
Mm hmm.
And then formally make it happen.
You don't need anything to continue on with Cbis for this year. You just have to deal with.
I just need to make sure we're going to do that before we start our scheduled audit in two weeks.
But not quite as big as we would like it to be.
Right, yeah, exactly. Well, thanks for taking that one. Do that. Um, then you know discount for prior client unfortunately.
Want to switch?
Reserves next. Yes, so reserves. Um, this is a little preliminary, I want to say, but Lindsay had a question. So I said, instead of just giving Lindsay the answer, I said, you know, it's really informative for all of them to have this information. So I updated the reserve sheet that is in our budget book. I tweaked it a little bit. Um, so our reserves are comprised of excess of deficiency and stabilization, and that's what our policy outlines that we set last year. Last year, our E and D was one point three million. We used six hundred thousand for the budget, which left us with seven hundred and seventy six thousand. Um, the yellow highlighted box is we do not know what our turnbacks are yet for the year is closed. I should know that in about two weeks, working on that actively right now. Um, there's just not enough time in the day to focus on closing when everything else is going on. So I'm expecting that to increase about three to four hundred thousand. So we'll be, you know, just above the million dollar range, I believe, one point one million dollar range. Don't hold me to that yet until I close books into the next two weeks. Um, but I wanted to give you where our starting point was of the seven seventy six and then anything we received in, in revenues that were not budgeted and anything that we did not spend in appropriations are added to that. So I think that will go up. Quite a good shot. Stabilization fund is an accurate, precise balance. Last year we had one point five million. Um, we earmarked five hundred thousand for the feasibility study for our portion of it. We appropriated sixty six thousand for network switch upgrades. And then just last meeting, we, uh, we appropriated one hundred and one thousand for a heat recovery wheel. So that leaves us with a current balance right now of nine hundred and four thousand dollars. I do want to mention last year we made sixty nine thousand dollars in interest in this fund, which is very helpful. So those are our total reserves right now. So while we had two point eight million, we're looking at a balance right now of one point seven million, but really it's going to be over the two hundred dollar mark once we get that certified E and D in a month or two. And then on to the OPEB trust. Last year, July first twenty four, we had a balance of almost five point nine million. Um, our increases consisted of investment or net investment earnings of six hundred and forty eight thousand. District contribution um last year in June, five hundred and forty six thousand. And then the last meeting, we appropriated the additional hundred and fifty thousand that we had shorted, shorted the um contribution due to the health insurance budget. So overall, our balance is um currently seven point two million dollars in the OPEB funds. Um, do want to mention that our, our updated liability is estimated to be twenty four point five million. So we are a good chunk into that. Um. As Pam and I were discussing, we're not sure we're going to be able to keep up that rate of contributions. Um, we've made a good, good chunk. We are there. Some of our surrounding communities have exceeded our funding initiatives, but um we're, we're in a pretty good place. And it's not required at this point. It will become required once we fully retire an assessment, so we're not that, so. I know there's um, what, eight, there's eight, ten years, so it might become required. But right now this is all, all current.
So eight to ten years, we get from seventy to twenty five?
No, that's when we needed to, to start contributing. So we've already.
Oh, oh, I see. Okay, we don't have to need it by then. Okay.
Yes, no, we do not need to need it. There's no, no date needed. Yes, it's when we needed to start contributing. So the question Kate would ask if she ever hears, how, how does this report compare to our reserve policy that uh standards that we've put in place? That was her question. And I do, it, it's too preliminary right now because we don't have the E and D figure. As soon as we get that E and D figure, I will give you a reflection on where we are in regards to our reserve policy.
Great. Any other questions?
Thanks for putting this together.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you very much. And. Time's up, we're just young. Uh, we're putting it in the business section because when people externally are asking about enrollment, I realize they don't really care about what I'm looking at, which is the class size distribution, which is more than probably the parent in our immediate constituency. Um, what they're interested in is kind of, you know, what the class sizes look like, how is it for our kids? And so what we've added to this is really ju- just a snapshot of what the total town numbers are so they can start their calculations. So I feel like I have to preface this by saying technically our October one, our October one report is when we land on enrollment figures for the year. So this is super preliminary. Um, and the numbers may change, they may not change, but we'll come back in mid October with a more comprehensive report, which is based on our reporting to DESI. So our official numbers, those are the numbers that we actually use in the calculations for the budget. And also that sectioning report. So you may be asking Maggie, confirming my thinking that I think I saw the email that they were closing down. Um, course changes. So once course changes shut down at the high school and things shake out, we'll go to work on creating the sectioning report for the year. That's another one of our manual procedures where we kind of have to download some things and you don't have the independent study that the kid is doing with the guidance test. So we have to pull out, you know, study halls and things like that and get you some true numbers on what class sizes look like in the different bands. Um, and across the different types of courses that we offer. This just gives you a quick snapshot of where we are in the year. Um, at the elementary school, um memorial's at three hundred and six students. Uh, Essex is at two hundred and you're carrying fourteen sections. So that's that added teacher at Memorial this year and twelve sections at Essex. Something I'm always looking at is the balance. Um, the average class size is nineteen at Memorial, seventeen at Essex. Um, the, you know, it's within a decent range. It's not as if one has twenty five and one has fourteen. So it's fairly well balanced. Um, and I do think that additional teacher has really, it's, we would have had some very large classes at third and fifth grade had we not had that extra teacher. Um, middle school is at two hundred and seventy eight students. They're looking at about an average class size of nineteen, we're able to achieve that because there's only, there, you know, a set of five courses per grade level one teacher and there isn't sections in choice. So it's not like a high school kind of schedule where kids are carrying seven courses. So there's or more, or less. So it's not, there's a simple divider there. So that basically gives you the general breakdown. Um, and again, we're pending all enrollment um and section report to get you the class sizes at the high school, but we're at three hundred and seventy two. With the eleventh grade being our largest class. Um, so we're at eleven fifty six. What's noteworthy is this is all in district, right? So this doesn't account for our out of district students, but they will show up on this chart down below. Uh, the total in district number for Manchester is ten. There are ten students placed out of district. Um, in special ed placements for a total of six hundred and twenty four, four hundred and fifty two in district students with Essex, sixteen out of district placements with four fifty eight. We're carrying eighty six school choice students for intuition out. I should have starred and written in at the bottom. Um, just remember if students are school choice in and in out of district placements, we simply facilitate the placement. We do not pay for the placement. So the direct, the bill, we facilitate the payments, but the bill is being paid by the town of residents. Um, so we have a total of ninety school choice students and then uh we have four spent tuition in. So our total is um eleven seventy six. So we go there, then we send this over to the town so they can start. I don't think from my look at it, back me up on this or just do, there hasn't been any substantial movement in the year to your, the town numbers.
Questions? Thank you very much.
Because we can indulge this for like literally thirty seconds. Uh, Michelle spoke to the IRS. We had a conference call with them. It appears there's a box that is not Harper's or system did not check. So it, it's a pretty simple low level um error. I think there's need to come in. Uh, you got to help us tie you up now.
Yes.
Second hope is check the box.
They're going to show us.
Nice enough.
Yes, um, but that's why we were chosen because the box was not checked in our R W two, which is the result of our year old company.
And I didn't say what the box was. The box is the retirement box. So you have, because the school district does not pay into social security. Because payments go into MTRS, you have to check the box that indicates that they're paying into the state search fund and not the social security fund. So. So that's, she said that is what drew their attention and that's why I.
It's love AI.
Exactly. But they did say it's, it's very common right now in Massachusetts. They have chosen quite a few Massachusetts clients too often. So we're not alone.
It's so common, you don't audit them.
Right. Memo, tell me to fix the box.
Alright. It actually was quite comforting because you could not imagine.
Right.
Why we were so licensed. And that's all we got.
Alright, school committee comment. I have a comment. It'll be brief, but I do have a comment. Uh, it is three parts. So what is. One, since we just had the enrollment this uh report preliminary. Just bringing back to the idea of the committee, the discussion of what right sized means as our town partners start taking enrollment reports and we get average class sizes for, for instance, the high school level. I'm not bothered by using an average. I'm bothered by some big so small budget, but some of our town partners will use that as um discussion point and want to explore further. So I think that again, for us to understand and decide what right size really looks like and means so that we can be confident with it, might be something to remember. Two, I don't want to lose and Kate's gone, but um what we talked about either in the workshop or the last meeting, about the DESI report um about sending that out to our town partners with the, with one memo and then push out to the community with kind of a different message.
I had spoken to Kate. She's got a draft and we're. I had spoken to Kate. She's got a draft and we're intending to include it in that next newsletter as, as an information.
And then the third thing is, I'm sounding just a, a broken record since last January, probably, but I've been reading the drum of deciding early on the budget. And now we've heard repeatedly from others around, including Andy tonight with an official request from the select board that we do this early. We have the schedule, but the point is that we can come to consensus about where we're starting from early. And I think that that's valuable to keep in mind that that's the case. Um, we also have the request to get those, those meetings moved weekend. So I guess that's.
I did have an exchange with Ben about the meetings. Um, he had asked and I simply, I did ask him to give us some, some dates, but our schedule is really full. He was looking at beginning of October. So I just asked them to, to give us some potential dates that they were looking at. Um, and what they, there's, they.
Did you say Ben, you mean Ben? Okay, so is he sound kind?
I believe so.
Yes.
So we're waiting here back. He's waiting for the numbers. They said they were planning on a tax talk of some sort. Newbie here. Uh, if we did want to decide on a direction on the budget early on in the process, what, how does that get accomplished in finance committee?
You know, when, when we first start having our, you know, budget conversations, it's usual in November, it, it just means that when we all come to the table and they start with, from a position of here's what level services looks like, then we say, yes, we want to do that. No, we want to do more. Yes, we, we give direction early.
You're not.
What we've done in previous years, no.
You're asking that we, that.
I'm saying that because what we historically have done the last few years is taken that information and then wait and wait and wait and and maybe come to consensus down the line.
I see.
If we can start to come to consensus earlier to give them direction, there's nothing stopping us from doing that.
And there's no, and there's, it's not, and because of the timing of healthcare numbers, et cetera, it's not really possible to move budget conversations earlier in our agendas or anything. We give you everything except healthcare and a real special ed number. It's, um, right, and then we can do all the contractual and the new estimates and those other things, just to get. And I'd be fearful, you're the expert, but I would.
I don't want to project this out, so like fifteen, I do. My comment is primarily just for us as members to be thinking right now, what is the directional instruction we're going to want to give? What are we seeing, feeling and come prepared to discuss?
I'm sorry, I think one comment was about, um, wanting to make sure we have Pam's evaluation and an indication for, for, um, contact ahead of, if not, maybe that's an email to Chris. Yeah, what do we need to do to get that done to her? Cause she's asked us to do that. Just tell me when you're ready to do it.
This is a Kristen Kate's question. This is a God, this is a question that end all. Okay, so we need to follow up with Kristen to do. How about, I will commit to following up with Kristen Kate. It's not probably.
Okay. Sorry.
That's okay.
You asked for it.
Yeah, that's a good point. Thank you for the, yeah, yeah. Any other straw out? Any comment to that? Take a motion to adjourn? Second?
End of conversation.
All in favor? Are you in favor?
Yes, I'm in favor.
We're adjourned at eight thirty nine P M. Thank you. Thank you for joining us on.